Good evening, I'd like to welcome you in call to order the July 10th Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any proposed amendments to this evening's agenda?
Mayor, we have just one that I have. We could move item G to the front of our business items so our guests can start things off from Gordon Thomas Honeywell.
Is there a second to move that?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Claussen. Any discussion of that?
I think after.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item has been moved. Any other amendments to this evening's agenda? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
Will we approve agenda as changed?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the agenda has been approved. We have our first citizen comment period, and that's for items on this evening's agenda. Mr. Rice, are you here to address the council tonight?
Snooping.
You're just snooping? Glad to have you here. Mr. Seago, you'll wait till we get to your business item? Okay. We'll close the citizen comment period, and now we're to consent agenda.
Care I move we approve the consent agenda as published?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. Is there any comments or questions on the consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We don't have any presentations or public hearings. Now we're to our new item A, which is introduction of our new lobbyist from Gordon Thomas Honeywell. So Brianna, if you wanted to make an introduction?
Sure. Well, good evening, everyone. As you know, I'm Brianna Murray with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs, and our firm has been providing your lobbying services. You'll remember in recent years that Chelsea Hager has been a team member of mine in helping me out in representing and advocating for you all. She moved on to some new endeavors after this last legislative session. I'm really sad to be losing her, but I'm also really excited to introduce you to my newest teammate, which is Josh Weiss, and I'm bringing him on to join me in advocating on your behalf, and want to turn it over to him to introduce himself to you all.
Thank you. Good introduction, thanks Brianna. I'm Josh Weiss, now with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs. So I've spent, I've been in Olympia for about 20 years doing government relations work. I started on nonpartisan staff for the House of Representatives, working on natural resource issues primarily. I'm an attorney, I grew up in eastern Washington, but I went back to the Vermont Law School for law school, started working at the House of Representatives shortly thereafter. I've worked as a legislative liaison for a state agency since then, I worked at a trade association, and most recently spent almost 10 years with Washington State Association of Counties. So I know a number of you probably recognize me from either the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council, meet annual legislative event, or from AWC events. I was really sort of their lead lobbyist, for those of you that know AWC, I was the counterpart for Dave Williams, and now Candace Bach. So that's sort of the context of what I've been doing, working very closely with Kitsap County. So really enjoyed my time with the counties. Essentially Brianna made me an offer that I couldn't refuse, seemed like a great step. I've obviously worked with her and her team for the entire time I've been at WAC, and just extremely impressed with them, and also thought that their sort of ethic and philosophy and approach to government relations was very similar to mine. And so it was just a great fit. Excited to be here. I will admit, maybe I shouldn't do this, Brianna would tell me not to do this in a pitch, I'm still very much learning the city issues, but that's actually quite fun for me. So enjoying it a lot. I've been on the job for two weeks now, so looking forward to working with you, and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Josh or Brianna?
No, but I would ask you to put November 15th on your calendar because that is the KRC CESE legislative meeting this year.
I'll be there again.
Good job, Beck.
November 15th.
Location been determined yet?
No.
And if I can just add, I could not be happier about having Josh on our team at Gordon Thomas Honeywell. I'm excited to have somebody who is not just at the same level as me, but has even a decade more of experience to help develop strategies and be successful on your behalf. So this is exciting for our firm, exciting for me, as it is for Josh, and I hope you all see it as, just as an exciting of a change. We are quickly transitioning our focus to the 2019 legislative session. We've had some conversations with the mayor about potential legislative agenda items, and will be bringing forward to you all a draft legislative agenda later this summer. If you have legislative agenda items that you would like us to research and consider as potential items, please do pass them along to the mayor and to us, and we're happy to work with you on starting to get that going and doing any research over the interim. And just a couple comments about the upcoming 2019 session. It is a long legislative session, it is the first year of the two-year biennium, so that means the state will be developing their operating capital and transportation budgets. The biggest funding opportunity this coming session will be in the capital budget. There is a squeeze on the transportation budget for this biennium. I am aware that one of the priorities that is very important to you all is a couple of compact roundabouts, which of course are transportation. So I'm fully aware of the challenge that we have before us in securing that transportation funding in what's otherwise a really tight budget. And I'm also hopeful that you guys will identify some capital budget projects with the Pocket Park and others to take advantage of those funding opportunities. So that's a little foreshadow of the work yet to come, and we will be back later this summer.
Mr. Claussen?
Just a quick question, Brianna. Have you been involved in any of the discussions in Olympia about the revenue stream that's coming in? Is it better than anticipated, or?
Like what is the revenue forecast saying?
Yeah.
They did just do a revenue forecast, did you look?
It's about 200 million up, roughly. Yeah, it continues to be strong. Now, I know that in their analysis, they indicated a lot of questions about the trade war with China and the impact on state, and a lot of uncertainty just about how that would impact our revenues.
The other question somewhat related is the recent Supreme Court ruling on the internet sales. Has the state done any kind of crystal ball on what that might do?
From the state perspective, that ruling was very favorable to the changes the state made in the Marketplace Fairness Act. And so I think from their perspective, it solidified what they were already in the process of implementing. They did just come out with their first quarter of sales tax revenue, revenues that came in, and I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but can get you what the estimated increase was specifically for Port Orchard based on that change.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
Other questions? I know you've got another commitment at 7:00, and that's why you came early, so thank you for your time, and we'll see you soon.
Sounds good. Thanks for the flexibility on the agenda, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, we're gonna get back to our business items. Our new item B, 7B, is an adoption of an ordinance amending the Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12, Parking, Stopping, and Standing. Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. As a housekeeping measure and in working with parking enforcement staff, and to support proposed modifications to the city's car charging stalls, the city's Public Works Department continues to annually inventory existing signage to compile corrections, revisions, and/or modifications to the Port Orchard Municipal Code. Staff recommends adoption of ordinance 018-18, thereby updating Municipal Code Sections 1012, 10, 1012-500, and adding a new section, 1012-640, parking of certain trailers and semi-trailers of Chapters 10.12, parking, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city. Basically, if you go to ordinance 018-18, primarily what you're seeing is upon request by parking enforcement, because there were a number of trailers that were utility trailers that there was nothing in the code that were being parked permanently. So we added Section 28 under definitions under the existing 1012.010, that has to do with trailers or semi-trailers, including every vehicle without motive power designed to be drawn by a vehicle, motor vehicle, truck, or tractor, and so constructed that an applicable part of its weight rests upon or is carried by such motor vehicle, but this does not include a municipal transit vehicle such as a RV. So we added that definition so that that's in the code. The other update was in the parking. We had a request on Sherman Avenue to deal with some new houses that were built and parking on the street, so that's under Section 52 that was added. And then the new section that was added basically comes out of Paulsbo's code, we looked at that and found it was the best, and that's basically the addition of 1012-640, that has to do with parking of certain trailers and semi-trailers now that it's defined. So that's really, because I know we just did this recently, and that this was, we felt like there was a need to not wait a year to bring this forward, so that's it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 8018-18, thereby updating Port Orchard Municipal Code Sections 10.12.10, 10.12.500, and adding new section, 10.12.640, parking of certain trailers and semi-trailers of Chapter 10.12, parking, stopping, or standing in certain areas of the city, with the final form approved by the city attorney.
Motion by Councilmember Ashby, and a second by Councilmember Deener. Any discussion or questions?
Yes, I have, that's why I made the motion.
Motion maker, please.
So, under the Definitions 28, all of, every other definition in this particular chapter has references either an RCW or a WAC. So I'm wondering if that was just missed in this definition, or is this a definition that we created ourselves?
The, when I looked, I first looked for a definition in the RCW, and there was not a definition. There were, yeah, there wasn't a definition, there was nothing that was applicable. So that's why there's no RCW citation or WAC. So this comes from Paulsbo, and so we just use Paulsbo's because the state really has no definition for this.
And then my other question is, why are we?
There was one that wasn't applicable, though, it was?
4604, I apologize. There was some back and forth regarding this one, and I thought I had recognized RCW 4604.620. So let me look that up really quickly and make sure if that's?
And then my other comment is, why are we excluding recreational vehicles from that?
Because they're, I think they're covered under another section in the code. If you go down, I can't remember, it's 10.16, about four years ago, we addressed that specifically, RV, so it has its own?
It has its own.
Section.
Other questions? Well, Sharon, do you find your answer?
There is a definition of trailer at 4604.620, RCW. I think our definition was a combination of that definition and the Paulsbo definition, so maybe that's why the decision was made to not reference the RCW.
Right. When I read the RCW, and I printed it out, it didn't seem to apply, and I can't recall at the time, but I remember I did pull that one up, print it out, and I read it. And at one point, I was gonna try to work with that one, but then we found the Paulsbo code, and felt it was just gonna be simpler to?
Right, okay.
To go that route.
Other questions? Comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. You'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapters 10.12, Parking, Stopping, and Standing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So we are on to now 7C, Adoption of an Ordinance Adopting the New 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Janine with the beard there. Excuse me, Mr. Bond.
Mayor, Council. Pursuant to the retirement of Chapter 20.04 POMC, the city accepted applications for the 2018 amendments to the city's comprehensive plan through January 31, 2018. Three land use map amendments and two text amendments were submitted by that deadline. All of the amendments except for one, the overlook land use map change, were city-initiated. The Planning Commission held a hearing on June 5, 2018, and recommended that the city council adopt the 2018 amendment package as submitted. The council reviewed the amendment package at its June 17 work-study meeting, and requested that the staff place this ordinance on tonight's agenda. And I'm gonna walk you through the amendments, just so the public can see what is being changed here in terms of the maps. The First Amendment is the Crawford Road area, which is off of Bethel just south of Salmonberry, and this is an area that's currently zoned commercial. It's all vacant or single-family residences at this time, and as a result, there's a lot of code enforcement issues there because nobody's fixing up their property because they are working towards an eventual redevelopment, or expecting a redevelopment at some point in the future. However, there's really no movement for any commercial development in the Bethel corridor, much less the redevelopment of an already developed site. In addition, the private road and fragmentation of ownership makes this area difficult, and so the recommendation is to change it to residential medium density. The next amendment on the docket is the Old Clifton Road amendments, and those are near the industrial park, you can see them highlighted in green here, along the Old Clifton Road frontage, and those are proposed to go from employment industrial to residential high density. And the reason for that is that they are bordered on the west side by a ravine with a creek, and are separated from the rest of the industrial park by that natural feature. And so, given the high visibility of that location along a roadway, we felt that a high-density residential would be more appropriate, especially given the proximity to the freeway and easy access for commuters such as to the shipyard. Finally, the final amendment is the Overlook Apartments Phase II Amendment, and this is up above the movie theater and the Buy Mart location on the edge of town off of Mile Hill. And they're asking to go from residential medium density to residential high density with a zoning of R20. This is at the top of the hill, above their existing apartment project that is under development, and the goal here is to move towards a multifamily-type development project. In addition to the map amendments, we have a handful of text amendments, including an amendment to the Appendix B of the Comprehensive Plan, which includes two actions. One of them is adopting the Bethel-Sedgwick Corridor Right-of-Way Acquisition Plan, and the second is to update, or to adopt the Updated Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Finally, there's a text amendment to clean up the parks element, to add the Rockwell Pocket Park and Waterfront Park expansion to the Comprehensive Plan so that city funds can be spent on those projects. The recommendation from staff is to approve the ordinance adopting these amendments as proposed, and I will note that there was, I don't know if this was the original version that went out of the pack, but we had a last-minute change where we added Section 7 here in red, so hopefully you all are looking at the correct version. We had some edits that we had to send through the attorney before we could include them.
Mr. Rosepi.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments as presented.
Second. Motion and a? And a second by Councilmember Kachardi. Questions or comments for Mr. Bond?
If it is a deeply discussed over committee?
Motion and a second, with no further discussion. You'll be voting on the adoption of an ordinance adopting the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are now to 7D, Adoption of an Ordinance Adopting the 2018 Zoning Map. Mr. Bond?
Thank you. Related to the 2018 Comprehensive Plan update, the land use map in the Comprehensive Plan has changed, and as a result, the zoning map needs to be updated to reflect those changes and to ensure that the zoning map is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The ordinance before you is an update to the city's zoning map to implement those Comprehensive Plan designations, and I will note that because we had a final plat recorded out at McCormick Woods Parcel D, the boundaries of that had shifted slightly from when we made our last zoning map, and so we tweaked things a little bit to follow the Eldon Trails and Parcel E and Parcel D at McCormick Woods. With that said, the recommendation is to approve an ordinance adopting a 2018 zoning map.
Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the 2018 zoning map as presented.
Second by Councilmember Claussen. Comments or questions about the zoning map? Councilmember Ashby?
Well, I just have a question. Can we, can your department print a zoning map that's bigger than this?
Yes, absolutely. And the official zoning map that, from which this file is created, will be printed at full size so that the mayor and the attorney can sign it, and then it will be on file for public viewing.
Because I usually keep one at my house, and this one is just really hard for me to read.
Sure. Would you like, we'll either, we can have an unsigned version?
I don't need, I just use it for reference.
Okay.
You don't want my signature?
If you would like to autograph it, I would be pleased.
May I have one also?
Give everybody a full-size one.
I usually have one on my office wall, too.
Uh huh. We should have one in here.
We might, it might not be a bad idea. We're almost done with Tremont, maybe we'll replace the Tremont picture.
Well, you can have both.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, a second. Other questions about the zoning map? Okay. You'll be voting on the adoption, the ordinance adopting the 2018 zoning map. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7E, Approval of 640 Bay Street Purchase and Sale Agreement. Let's see here, Mr. Bond?
Thank you. On November 14, 2017, the city council voted to declare the city-owned property known as the 640 Bay Street as surplus to the needs of the city. On November 17, 2017, the city issued a request for proposals seeking the sale and redevelopment of the 640 Bay Street property. This RFP was posted in multiple newspapers and on the city's website. One proposal for the purchase and redevelopment of 640 Bay Street was submitted by the deadline of January 12, 2018. On February 13, 2018, the city council passed Resolution 006-18 declaring the proposal by Waterman Investment Partners LLC to be the winning proposal under the RFP. The city council instructed the mayor to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement providing for the sale and redevelopment of the property. On April 16, 2018, the city council approved contract 034-18 with Gary Anderson to prepare a broker's price opinion indicating the value for 640 Bay Street to be $219,534. The attached purchase and sale agreement is the product of a months-long negotiation between the city and Waterman Investment Partners LLC. The purchase and sale agreement provides for a payment of $150,000 to the city, plus a contingency that the buyer enter into a development agreement with the city to provide additional valuable consideration, including but not limited to: construction of a Frederick Avenue hill climb with a value of $101,900; water main replacement within the Frederick and Prospect right-of-way consisting of a continuous welded HDPE 200-foot length pipe; sidewalk improvements for ADA accessibility, oh, the previous one was totaling $35,905; sidewalk improvements for ADA accessibility between 640 Bay Street and the Bay Street pedestrian pathway, estimated cost $38,230; and a public plaza at Prospect of at least 400 square feet totaling $16,850, for a total valuable consideration of $192,885, in addition to the $150,000 cash that is proposed for the purchase. Staff recommends that the city council vote to approve the purchase and sale agreement for the 640 Bay Street property as presented. Actually, that should say, I believe there's a resolution, so it should be a motion to approve the resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement. My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase and sale agreement, the resolution for the 640 Bay Street property.
Second.
Motion and a second. I do have, I had a couple of questions by individual councilmembers, and if I can just address them, maybe I'll catch other people's. So one of them was what our costs were in this property, and including the staff time, it was $144,968, included the purchase price of $136 and change, some legal time associated with it, and staff time, so. And then Councilmember Chang asked about the appraised values and what the value of the right-of-way along Frederick Street. So there was three, there was three appraisals, or broker's price opinions, I should say, prepared. The first was for the property alone at $219,534. The right-of-way was valued at $57,160 for a combined value of $276,694. And then if you add the $150,000 purchase price to the public benefits associated with the improvements they're gonna make, it's roughly $340,000 worth of value we're getting related to the broker's price opinion of $276. So that's, and the questions that I got prior to the meeting, other questions or comments?
I have several. If I could go through all of them, you can make notes and then answer them. I, quite honestly, I'm confused by some of the numbers in the agreement. In the resolution itself, the last whereas has, whereas the attached purchase and sale agreement provides valuable consideration consisting of cash payment and voluntary public improvements totaling $342,885. And then, when you look at the purchase and sale agreement, under the closing, I'm finding it, under the closing, or under the conditions to closing, it's Condition 4.1 Development Agreement. It says, and this is partway through it, "The development agreement must demonstrate $126,694 in other valuable considerations contemplated in the purchase price of the property," not the 192, it says 126. And then when you read?
That's incorrect. It is the 192, and your other number was correct, because that was the 340, those two numbers add to the 33.
Correct. But when you read the actual, what they have to do, it references $242,000. It does not reference the 300.
Which page you on?
I'm trying to find it. Oh, if you read right here, if you go to deposit purchase price, 2.2, purchase price, the purchase price of the property includes $150,000 cash payment, and then we're gonna talk about the rest of that in a minute, and then it says $276,094, for a total purchase of $276,694. I'm getting too many numbers that?
We are.
Don't, aren't consistent.
And this ping-pong back and forth?
Yeah.
A number of times.
That's referencing the broker's opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not consistent with our resolution. So then, the other question I, the other questions I have is under 2.1, the deposit, if you go down in there, it says the, the buyer is going to deliver to the escrow company land title a promissory note in the amount of $15,000. And then the earnest money note will be converted to cash upon the expiration of the due diligence period. Then it goes on to say? Then it goes on to say, "In twist, we'll accrue on the deposit for the benefit of the buyer." I'm wondering, how do you accrue interest on a note? If the buyer were to give us a cashier's check and was actually having money, not being able to earn interest on that money, I can see where they would be entitled to interest. But a note is a promise to pay.
There's a definition for that, and so the note is differently defined than the deposit. The deposit is when it converts to cash, and then interest begins to accrue on that deposit.
But it's not converted to cash until the expiration of the due diligence period.
But which is defined by the word deposit there in parentheses? So at first, it's an earnest money note as defined, then it becomes a deposit, once due diligence is waived. So then the deposit will be held.
Once it's converted, okay, okay.
And the deposit, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's covered.
Okay, okay.
Like, I would agree with you, yeah, that a note shouldn't be accruing interest.
Yeah, that was the way, I didn't read the rest of it. My other question is, and this is because you have to remember, I'm the recovering banker. If I have a $15,000 note, do I have any collateral behind that? Or is it just a personal note? And is, is it a personal note by Mr. Seago, or is it a note by the LLC?
Typically be the LLC, I believe.
And is there collateral behind that? Because what good does, if, if everything falls through, and how do we recoup our money? You know, by...
We get the property back.
By Mr. Seago's good graces. I mean, I don't know. That's just a question. These are just things that came up to me as I was reading this. And I, I'm supportive of the concept that it doesn't all have to be cash. We are recovering hard dollars for the hard dollars the city has into it. But the rest, the other value is going to be value to our citizens in the form of public amenities. Who gets to choose those? Because they're not defined in here. We have a table of things that it could be, but there's nothing that prescribes that those are what will be done. And then who, who chooses the value?
These were estimates provided us, to us, by the developer. And right now, the, the project is, we're not, this is a purchase and sale agreement, which is going to be followed by a development agreement.
Development agreement.
Further down the road, which, then further down the road, we're going to have actual designs versus concepts. And so, this is coming back, back before you, before we accept the $150,000. This is, you know, the second step probably in this process here.
We can't close without the development agreement, and the development agreement will have a higher-level conceptual design with more details on the improvements to be made, which could be more expansive than what is shown here, but we just didn't have enough clarity at this point to define more than this.
Another question I have is under 5.2, termination of the agreement. The buyer will have the right to terminate the agreement if, in the buyer's good-faith judgment, and I know the buyer has good-faith judgment, the real property, if he, if in their good-faith judgment, the real property is not suitable for the buyer's intended use, or does not meet the buyer's intended investment objectives, the buyer has the right to, the buyer's right to terminate must be exercised by delivering written notice to the seller before the expiration of due diligence. In the event that the buyer does not complete the purchase, the buyer shall return the real property as near as practicable to its original condition. And then, if the buyer terminates this agreement pursuant to this section, meaning that the property does not meet their intended use or intended investment objectives, the deposit will be returned to the buyer, and the agreement will terminate. So there's no risk to the buyer at all if they choose to terminate this because the property doesn't meet their investment objectives. Is that something that we're comfortable with?
I think that's pretty common. I think, I'm assuming that part of their due diligence over the next, you know, three or four months will be, for example, like an environmental. And so, if something, a finding like that were to come back, and that could trigger where this no longer may work, I think that's the whole reason. Something I didn't see in here which could address that is, is just exclusivity, you know, and a lot of times, you know, I don't see anything in here that, that we can't be out there continuing to market the property.
True.
You know, and so if, I think the longer someone wants due diligence with their opportunity to walk away from the deal, then the less likely a seller typically is providing exclusivity. So that might be a caveat we could take on that.
I was just trying to make sure that the city was protected.
But I think that language is normal.
Because it's going to be, the property's going to be tied up, and then they can walk away at the last minute, and we don't get the earnest money or the deposit.
Correct.
The buyer gets that back.
Right.
Along those same lines, you have total discretion to approve or deny a development agreement, and so you can pull the plug on this by not approving the development agreement, which would jeopardize their deposit as well.
Okay.
Certainly. Please address, address the council. This is Steve Seago, who is, represents the...
Investment Partners and our partnership that's been working on this. So, something to consider in this discussion, because the question, and, and councilmember Ashby, it's a good point, is, you know, what's, what's at stake? What's your risk? What have you, what's, what's on the, on the table that we've put into this? And typically, for a developer, the kind of investment that's made to ascertain viability, feasibility, the, the design components of a project are invested in after a site has been designated with control. So, in this case, it's kind of backwards. So, the city said, "We're interested in entertaining proposals based upon an RFP." And to do that, the developer applicants need to provide a fairly extensive representation of their intentions, which is a fairly costly endeavor. And I will tell you, on good, good faith, that that's cost me nearly $50,000 between design cost, architects, legal, the, the builder to do the estimates, and all these moving parts. To me, that's a substantial good-faith risk to, to make the effort to try to participate in my community in a way that I think is hopefully beneficial to all of us. And so, that's already, you know, been made. It's, it's hard to walk away from that. And in the next months, we'll continue to endeavor to explore the feasibility phase to make certain that it's not a question of, for us, about what pencils more than it is, is there some hurdle that's not sustainable for us as far as a development project? Is there some reason that the Department of Ecology might tell us, "We can't do this," et cetera? So, so I hope that helps a little bit in terms of where we already are in this process. And I know that's, it's not, that's not normal typically for a developer to do that, but that's something that I convince my team to do because we believe in this community, and we believe this is a great opportunity for all of us here, so. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have about that.
Those were the basic ones that I had.
So, I mean, I haven't dealt in commercial properties, but when I've dealt in, you know, buying and selling homes, you can either offer a note or cash for, for your earnest money agreement.
Right.
So, I don't think we're outside the norm. I mean, we, the council could choose to counter if you're not satisfied with the, the note during the diligence period, but that's what's been presented to, you know, in the offer in this purchase and sale. On 2.2, that is, I don't, I know that number isn't correct. It is the 150. And my question for Sharon here on, in that sentence, where for, for the valuable consideration and pub, other bene, public benefits as agreed to the parties in a separate development agreement for a total purchase price, is that valuable consideration a purchase price? And the, the number's wrong. It's 342 something. It's, it's 305, is that what it is?
Eight-eight-five.
Eight-eight-five, okay. It's 342-885?
Maybe just take that chart from up above and insert it into the purchase and sale agreement, so it's easy to track that.
Right. When we, when we were working on this originally, that we wanted to, so as, as councilmember Ashby pointed out in section 4.1, or, yeah, 4.1, the development agreement, we wanted to make sure that, that, that covered at least the, the difference between the, the broker's price opinion and the $150,000 offer. So I think that was intended to sort of be at least this much, but we figured that it would be considerably more than that. So, I think that's, that's where that number came in, just so you know, that there would be at least, it would at least cover that, that difference. But I'm not sure I'm understanding the question about what...
Okay, so we know the number's wrong. That number needs to be 342-885.
Right.
The question is, it says, "In a separate development agreement for a total purchase price of 342-885."
Okay.
They're only purchasing it for 150. Is that an accurate statement?
Oh, to, to call it a total purchase price? Well, you know, it, it, it is the amount that they are, it's the amount of consideration the city is receiving.
So is that what we should say for a total?
It might be more appropriate.
A total amount of valuable, for the total of the valuable consideration of...
I, I believe that would be an appropriate change.
Would others agree that that's a better way to state that?
No.
And then change the dollar amount? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to that. We should probably make a motion to that effect, if somebody wanted to make one.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the purchase and, purchase and sale agreement under section 4 dot 1.
It's 2.2, isn't it?
2.2.
We've got, we've got a couple that need...
Got a couple. I was down under 4.1.
2.2 and?
And 4 dot 1.
And 4 dot 1, okay.
And it basically to sync these numbers back up to total consideration, the purchase price of the property for $150,000, then the other consideration of improvements that are listed in that table within the resolution, with that new total being the $342,885 of total valuable consideration.
Got a motion and a second. So, 2.2 and 4.1, are those the only two places that we reference that number?
Yeah. I just have one other.
Okay.
When you get to it, I know, when you get to it.
Well, let's, let's deal with this amendment first, to correct this purchase and sale at 2.2 and 4.1. Further discussion of the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the amendment carries, Mr. Rose Pepe, you had a question?
I'm not sure this is significant or not, but under 2.1, where it says the due diligence period is defined as section 5.2.1, I believe that should be 5.1. Again, that may just be a...
I'm trying to find it.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
4.1, where are you, where are you referring to?
That is a good catch.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yep, that's right.
Is that a Scrivener's error, or do we need a motion to correct that?
Scrivener's.
That's a Scrivener's error. We can change that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Schenk?
I, like councilmember Ashby, are, I'm very excited about the project, and in general, I'm very supportive of, of the concept. There is one detail, though, I'm still not understanding, and that's the, the Frederick Hill climb. I understand that we'll be taking away 14 parking spaces, and we'll be building a significant plaza, which is considered an amendment. But what I'm wondering is, what is the process where we notify the neighbors that we're taking 14 parking spaces in, for something else? Is, is there a process, or are we deciding now to do that without public input?
That process will occur as a result of the development agreement, either by combining a street vacation and development agreement, or specifying that the city is going to initiate a street vacation, which will include a public process. If the city then failed to complete the street vacation after agreeing to do it in a, in a development agreement, then it would, every, everything, all the agreements would unwind. So, you're, you're agreeing to, to move towards that, but there will be an actual hearing on the street vacation at a later date.
Well, are we vacating the street if we're retaining ownership of it? Because we're not selling it.
Well, not necessarily. That, that's true. So, I, I guess allowing the construction of a hill climb staircase could be done without, without a street vacation. So, but there's also a public hearing on the development agreement that would include that proposal. So either way, there, there will be a, a hearing. And the, the other neighbor on the east of that right-of-way is aware of this, is my understanding.
Dance, Galley, property.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Kind of a curiosity question. Typically, in a street vacation, property owners on both sides are notified and have an opportunity to buy their share, but in this case, assuming it went to a vacation, we would only be vacating 50% of it up to the center line. So how would that affect the property owner to the east? Would they have an opportunity to buy half of...
We would only vacate the westerly half.
So it would only affect the properties on, that border it on the west, so.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Other than the parking, the parking goes away on both sides. It gets, it gets...
Well, the parking is under our control. We don't...
Yeah.
It's our street. We can do what we want. But when we go to sell a portion, if we do get to that point of selling it...
Yes.
I was just curious, how does it affect the property owner on the other 50% that's not going to be sold?
My understanding is, we're selling half of it, they're going to build this public amenity, which then is gifted to the city, and it'll be ours, in our right-of-way and our stair climb.
Understood. And we will modify the remaining half to provide adequate thoroughfare, so.
Yes.
It's more of just a process curiosity than anything.
I'm not opposed, but I think it's a major change in traffic. People who used to go north on Frederick to Bay Street can't do that. They have to go all the way over to Iger Street, and maybe that's not that big a deal, but it is changing traffic.
No, they can still drive down.
We're blocking off Frederick Street, so the only way...
No, we're not.
We're not totally blocking.
Yeah, we are. Goes away to vehicle traffic.
Right. We're blocking off...
Cars.
The whole. That you're not still going to have.
Right, but you're, you're...
Half of it's, it goes to the building, and the other half goes to, becomes a, a public plaza, the stair, the stair climb.
Right. You're exchanging one access-through point from vehicles to pedestrians only, but at the end of the day, you're gaining, I mean, you can't have redevelopment and, you know, benefit to the downtown without losing some things, and you're going to lose, you know, 14 parking stalls and a one-way, steep one-way road. But that, it's all about trade-offs.
And I would add to that, that as part of the development agreement, parking is going to be created either off-site or through some other scenario for this project, and there very well may be some sort of parking sharing arrangement. And so we really, until we get to the development agreement portion of things, we really don't know what the net change in parking is downtown. It could actually end up being an increase.
I think it's important to realize that our actions here tonight just allows the developer to move to the next step, which will provide us more detail in regards to what we're trying to talk about in design.
It's that development agreement, that'll be, yeah, all the details will be described.
But what we are doing, as I understand it with the resolution, the way the resolution is written, and the purchase and sale agreement, we are hard-locking that $192,000 worth of amenities. Because we've taken the 150, we've added the 192 to it, and I come up with 342. So if for some reason, the Fredericks Hill climb does not become part of this development, they still have to do $192,000 worth of amenities to comply with our resolution and our purchase and sale.
You'd have to rewrite the purchase and sale agreement.
Well, we'd have to renegotiate.
Specifically calls out...
Yeah.
And instruct the following improvements at a minimum.
But it says, but not limited to.
So we'll look at 5 dot 5 dot 1 six, 5 dot 5 dot 1 dot 6, in the purchase and sale agreement, the binding document.
And we can't, this could be amended, and we sat through...
You have to amend it, right.
Yeah. And we sat through a meeting where there was a lot longer list of things that would could have been considered for amenities. We just didn't want to complicate it and, and lock them into doing a half a million dollars worth of stuff when this, we're still pretty conceptual.
As long as we all have the understanding, as long as we all understand that if any of these four items do not follow through in the development agreement, we will renegotiate the purchase and sale. That's what I'm hearing.
You'd have to.
I think Mr. Bond covered it quite well, that when we get to the developers' agreement, you know, we're not locking ourselves into agreeing to what... you know, we're not locking ourselves into agreeing to whatever they present. If we're not comfortable with an item, we'll state that, and then it's a negotiation. Is the developer willing to move forward with those changes that we've imposed? If so, we can renegotiate this purchase and sales. It's kind of a, this is the first step to continue this process to the eventual development that we could both be happy with.
We're signed around and taking it, not that it was ever listed on the market, but we're taking the property off the market. We're allowing the developer to move forward and continue their process, which is gonna include coming back to the city council for an approval of a development agreement that we're, we need to negotiate.
Correct. But we also have an understanding that the total value, the total compensation will be three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Correct. Yes, or more. Okay?
I still think, as it is, it's a great move to move forward with, and I think it'd be foolish not to.
I'm pleased to be here tonight, presenting this.
Yeah, I am too. I think it's great.
Okay, other questions, comments, concerns?
No, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yep, absolutely.
Everybody has the same understanding.
This is a good conversation. We need to have it. Absolutely. Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Sometimes it's good to be a recovering banker. Thank you.
All right, you'd be voting on the approval of six forty Bay Street property purchase and sale agreement as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to the approval of the June twenty-six, twenty eighteen council meeting minutes. I think we had a couple people absent that evening, let me get to that one.
Ashby absent, Deener absent, and Mayor Petoncy was absent.
Okay, so I don't get to vote anyway. So Councilmember Deener and Councilmember Ashby probably recuse themselves. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Quason?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the June twenty-six regular meeting.
Second.
Discussion of those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the June twenty-six meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Is there two? Deener? Two abstentions. Okay. We've got item seven G, approval of a letter of support for PSRC SCADIT and Kitsap Transit Projects.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself from this discussion.
Yes, that's probably a good idea.
Thank you.
We'll invite you back soon. That's me. So, we have a letter of support for a, there's a grant application for Kitsap Transit that's applied for, do you want me to read this entire staff report, or is everybody?
No, really.
Okay. And the letter of support. I felt it was pretty benign, and I felt it was something, as the council's representative on the transit board, to bring that forward for a letter of support for their grant application. Entertain a motion to approve that. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I move to authorize the mayor to send the letter to the Puget Sound Regional Planning Council in support of Kitsap Transit's ferry terminal preventive maintenance project as presented.
Second.
Motion, second discussion, Mr. Chang.
Do you know if this is going to improve the Port Orchard Dock to the extent that in the case the Bremerton Terminal is not available, as it was a week or so ago, the fast ferry is able to dock in Port Orchard?
This particular grant, I don't believe so. It's for improvements, I think it's Kingston and for sure Bremerton.
But I am not sure this is actually for a grant. I believe this is to be put on PSRC's.
Priority listing.
No, not their.
Contingency list, you're correct.
Or their, just their TIB.
Transportation program board.
Yeah, yeah, their tip, thank you.
Okay.
Because they can't apply for grants until it's on the tip.
Okay, so we're writing a letter in support to get them on the list so they can apply for the grants.
Correct.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Chang, I don't believe there are, they've made a number of improvements, they've got improvements going into Kingston for that operation, and this is more for the maintenance. We need to be able to do maintenance on the boats, and they're doing improvements over at Bremerton primarily.
A few separately, because I would like to see us look into Port Orchard as a backup for that. I actually asked Transit that day, when we were stuck in Seattle with no way to get back, if they could take the fast ferry to Port Orchard, and I was told they could not because they did not have a platform.
ADA compliance, yeah.
In the past, you know, they did run the fast ferry between Port Orchard and Bremerton on a temporary basis, so we know it's possible. But it sounds like they need to prepare in case there's something.
It's a good point.
It would be nice.
Yep. I happen to know the executive director over there, I'll talk to him about that. Okay. Back to the matter at hand is this letter of support for their, and I think it's something we should be doing. Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the letter of support, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Want to grab Mr. Quason? We are to council committee reports. Finance Committee, I don't believe has met since the last council meeting, but they have a meeting scheduled on the twenty-fourth. The meeting got canceled because we didn't have updated financials since the last meeting. So July twenty-fourth at five fifteen PM here at City Hall is the next Finance Committee meeting. Economic Development and Tourism did meet.
We met yesterday, as a matter of fact. The first couple items on our agenda involved lodging tax. The mayor is working on the Lodging Tax Committee, assembling the committee. Mr. Councilman Rosa Pepe raised his hand to chair the LTAC Committee this year, and that was kind of that. We spent some time talking about the ban on plastic bags, and council had directed that to the Economic Development Committee. And we have put together a calendar to do that work, where we are not going to meet in August, and we have assignments for our September meeting, and we will be doing more due diligence. Then, we intend at the latest to bring something to work at the January work study. Hopefully, we will have something at the November work study, but our commitment is a January work study. And we're beginning our work with ordinances that have been used in Thurston County and Bellingham to begin our due diligence on that. Then we moved on to just a follow-up on the presentation that John Powers from KEDA did the previous month, and I'm pleased to say that Janine has done a lot of the website updating. And our committee recommended that we get some estimates of costs so that we can put something in the budget to update our video. And then the other thing we did was just acknowledge that Housing Kitsap has an affordable home ownership project that's happening over on Sherman, and.
Ribbon cutting on Thursday.
Ribbon cutting on Thursday. It's kind of a land use issue, but we had just become aware of it and just acknowledged it, that we have affordable housing going in in the area. And that was our meeting. And again, we will not be meeting in August, but we will be meeting the second Monday in September.
So follow-up since yesterday on two of those items. I do have a second LTAC Committee member committed now, so we have two. So we have a committee of four at least, two hoteliers and two nonprofits. Jack Edwards, who is the new manager of the Days Inn, was very happy to serve on it. He was the Economic Development Officer over in Bremerton for a period of time, has worked for a number of years in Bremerton at a hotel over there. And he's also excited to get engaged with the Economic Development Tourism Committee. And I informed him when the meetings are, and so look forward to seeing him at a future meeting. So that's.
Can you get me his email? We do send our agenda emails to some business folks.
Michelle, or, yeah, Michelle's got it, and she will get it to you. And then on the bag ban, I've got a flyer here. I was gonna push this out on Facebook and do a press release on it. Chris Gerito reached out to me that she's, wanted to ask if we'd join her in promoting this. She's got this film that will be aired at the Dragonfly on Thursday, the twenty-sixth, the six-thirty. So anybody that wants to come, here's the flyer that I planned to push out in the next couple of days promoting that event. So thank you for your report, and those couple updates I had, utilities, I don't know that you've met.
No, actually, we did not meet last month, but we will be meeting next week, nine thirty AM here at City Hall.
I think Mark just sent you an email today, matter of fact, saying that there are new agenda items.
Well, guess what? We have another month off.
Thomas is back until Monday for vacation. I think there are all in the hopper that are kind of critical path pieces, so there's really no updates.
Right. And it's not that Public Works isn't busy enough, right?
Nothing going on in Public Works.
Nothing, yeah. So we'll make up for it by having the sewer advisory meeting on July eighteenth at the sewer plant.
Actually, wasn't that also?
I got moved to August because of.
Lundberg.
You can tell I just got back.
I didn't hear that wasn't either.
It's copied on the email, too.
There's a survey sent out, or there's a request by West Sound to cancel July because of.
Vacation.
Commissioners, Jim, no, not Jim.
Jerry.
Jerry. So I think that's being moved to August.
Okay.
Wow.
So you got the month off.
This is getting better as we go. Let's see if we can.
And remember, our August is, meeting is, we're having two business meetings, the first part of the month, no work study in August, and we won't have a meeting the fourth Tuesday. So we'll have our summer break.
Oh, we're gonna meet second and third.
Second and third, you're right. And no meeting on the fourth. No work study at all that month.
Second and third Tuesday.
Second, third Tuesday for the business meetings.
Yeah.
And then the fourth Tuesday, we won't have a meeting in August.
Okay.
Remember, we approved that agenda in January. That was just a reminder. And we're doing the same thing in December, so we don't have to meet Christmas week.
So could you repeat that again?
The second and third Tuesdays are business meetings, and the fourth Tuesday of the month, we won't have a meeting at all.
Okay.
So there's no work study, and we're compressing the two business meetings into two consecutive weeks. To land use.
So we didn't meet because we have people out, but we are scheduled to meet on August sixth at nine thirty at GCD.
Okay. And the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be meeting soon. We kind of laid out a.
Right.
Timeline yesterday, and more to come on that. And Festival of Chimes and Lights?
Well, we don't have time to take a vacation. So we'll be meeting next week, three thirty, here at City Hall. And we're moving forward with promoting the newest event during the Festival of Chimes and Lights, and that's the tree decoration contest. We're getting sponsors for the trees. We'll be putting live trees in the planters downtown, and we're looking for businesses and nonprofit groups, and even council members or employees of the city, department heads, to sponsor a tree, decorate them, and it's a contest. Santa will be judging who has the best tree downtown. And we are doing this because we are not able to hang our garland this year. It is our twentieth anniversary, and we think that this will make the whole downtown look very festive for the festival. So quite soon, we'll be having a flyer out and promoting sponsorship. Are you gonna sponsor the Kitsap Transit?
Is it gonna be power?
For you, we will have. Yes, we're trying to work out the power aspect, yes.
Let's talk.
Oh, good, okay. And it's really inexpensive. Basically, a sponsor will cover the cost of the live tree. Public Works will be placing those trees in the planters, thank you very much. And also, we'll be recycling the trees at the end. So we'll give you more information, and we'll have the flyers out very soon.
Okay, thanks for the update.
Up here the trees.
Four to five feet, about.
It's gonna be fun.
Yes.
How many?
We're gonna have six feet because we have to have a foot.
The planters.
Are you gonna do every planter?
No, not necessarily. The planters have to be evaluated for safety reasons and also power access, which we're working on right now, to find out how many planters will work out.
Well, what, this is probably not the time, but if, there was a time not that long ago, when they originally put the planters in, that every other planter had a tree in it. They weren't Christmas trees, but they were trees. And I think that would be nice again.
Right, well, this is different. This is just, you know, for the season.
Right.
And these trees will be recycled at the end, but they're live trees just for basically part of November and the month of December. I think it's gonna be beautiful.
Are they all gonna be the same kind of tree?
Yes.
Same species?
Yes. The trees will be mostly identical, and we're looking to get a good rate on those trees. We think a minimum of thirty-five, but we could go as high as sixty-two.
Per tree, not no trees.
No palm trees.
No palm trees. No palm trees, sorry.
Evergreen.
Yeah, evergreen.
Okay. Onto other outside agencies. I gave you guys each a little flyer. This came from my Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting, and the statistic that I think is the most interesting on this flyer, and in the last quarter, this trend has narrowed, it isn't as dramatic, but over the last two years, every hour in the Puget Sound region, seven jobs are being created. In that same hour, only three housing units are being created. So that's a big part of this housing crisis that we're having, is so many jobs coming to the region, which is a good thing, but the housing hasn't been keeping up. And like I said, in the last quarter, that has narrowed, it isn't as dramatic as this, but on average, over the last two years, this is what we've seen, you know, in the region. And I thought it was pretty interesting.
I'm curious. So the jobs that are being created, are they all full-time? Are they part-time? Are they seasonal? Is any of that worked into it? So does that throw the stats off a little?
I didn't prepare the stats. This was Puget Sound Regional Council's statistics. I would have, a lot of this is the tech industry in the Seattle market.
Last time I looked at it, the other number that was impressive is the number of folks that were moving into our region. And at the time, we were creating more jobs and people were moving into the area, which obviously a plus.
Just statistics I wanted to share with you from my Puget Sound Regional Council meetings. Yes, Mr. Chang?
I just wanted to share that I attended a homes-for-all meeting this morning at Bremerton South Asian Army, and the topic of excitement is, you've probably heard, the Port Orchard Church of Christ has voted to continue exploring, putting the tiny home village on their church property off of Carling, which is off of Salmonberry. So that was somewhat exciting.
Thanks for sharing that. Other outside partners, I think for KRCC, the legislative.
Right, I just got an email today that said, save the date of November fifteenth, and the location hadn't been determined yet. But I do have, when we get to goodie order.
Okay. And, Mr. Quason?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that September, I believe it's the sixth, it's either gonna be the sixth or the thirteenth, one of the two. The transit system is arranging a dinner and inviting all of the councils from all of the different jurisdictions to join. Transit will be presenting all of the proposed, or all of the changes, so it'll no longer be proposed, but all of the changes to our fixed route system that will be implemented probably the first of next year. And we wanted to brief all the jurisdictions. We'll have our consultants there that will do kind of the whole county perspective, and then we'll have the opportunity to break off into, we can talk specifically about Port Orchard's changes. If you want to know others, you can go there. So just keep that in your calendar if you can, and you'll be getting something formally from the transit.
Others? Okay, I've got the mayor's report, got a couple things on here. So I missed the last council meeting because I attended the AWCC conference, and I think I shared with most of you via email that I was elected to the board. with most of you via email that I was elected to the board. So now the District 12 representative on the Association of Washington Cities Board. So I, I think between that and the things at Puget Sound Regional Council, I'm really trying to give us that, a regional presence, because we can't solve our funding problems that, for our infrastructure and transportation needs with our local dollars. So hopefully that's gonna get me more time with our, our delegation and other folks down in Olympia as, as the AWCC representative down there. A number of good sessions at, at the, at the conference. I went to a couple of sessions related to infrastructure fin, funding and programs and as challenging as some of the things that we're dealing with, we don't qualify for most of the programs because we're not as bad off as a lot, a lot of other folks, in particular folks in eastern Washington. There's, you know, there aren't the economic opportunities on the other side of the mountains that there are over here. And so I wasn't very encouraged leaving many of those sessions because there weren't many opportunities for us there. And probably the best session I went to was on public space and open space. I got a lot of ideas for our waterfront and particular, I know I was hesitant about a water feature maybe in the, in the next phase of the, of the Marina Park down there, but it probably, instead of being off to the side, if we're gonna do it, it probably needs to be a more prominent feature in the middle of it, after I saw that presentation and some of the things that have been, been done out there. The, I went to a se, so the Bremerton City Engineer was one of the presenters on ADA transition plans. And one of the things we'd already, he spoke to that we, we've already started is, is documenting our process and, and the things that we're doing and new construction counts. I mean, so there's attorneys out there doing public records requests on everybody, making sure that we're making improvements to our sidewalks and our curb ramps. And it's very important for us to document, you know, what we're doing out there. Bremerton, so one of the things I've talked to the Finance Committee to also, previously about is the, the ability to fi, fund these, these ramps are really expensive. And Bremerton has determined each one of those corners on a street corner in the, today's bid environment is costing $19,000 a ramp. Which I thought was an alarming number. So they went out and bid, and then bid a whole bunch of them and got the number back and went, holy cow, we can't afford to do this. So excluding design, they, they're hiring an employee or two, they're able to do them in-house at about $3,000 a ramp. Now, we don't have the engineering staff that they have to, you can't build it without a design, but I'm just, you know, just making you aware of some statistics that, what, what Bremerton has learned about rebuilding sidewalk ramps. Fred's been pushing a bit on Facebook here and our public notices on land use applications. And I've talked to Nick and Sharon about this and it's something we just really can't do because we have to capture the, the public comment. It's, it's one of our requirements and we can't capture the comments of Facebook. It would be very onerous to try to capture all those comments. So that's, it, our process is very deliberate in, in that. So I just wanted to report back that it's, it's just not something that we can, we can manage as far as, you know, putting those on Facebook and being able to capture all the public comment that, that would happen on Facebook.
Not, not to belabor, but are you talking about putting on the city's Facebook page the comments to that Facebook page, or are you talking about?
We would need to capture all the other comments that are happening out there and we, I don't, I don't believe we.
You mean once the city puts it and somebody else shares it, the other comments?
Yeah, we, all of the public, we, we would need, we just can't, we can't capture.
That's not feasible, but I'm wondering if there must, there must be a solution somewhere where we're just putting out information. It's almost like you wanna put it out, like you put it on your website. You don't wanna capture comments.
But in this case, we do wanna capture comments and that's why we do a public notice.
Because we're not putting it on, out on these.
We're putting it on our webpage and we're putting it out and where to get, to, to provide the public comment. So that's, that's, that's the distinct, we're using Facebook a lot.
But not for these.
But, but not for these public, public notice applications. And, and particular ones that's burning right now, there's the two AMPMs that, and, you know, I'm not excited about a, an AMPM on, on Sedgwick where there's four gas stations already, but, you know, it's a land use application, somebody's applied for it and it's a permitted use. So it's, you know, it is, so there's, you know, there's, there's a process for them. So we're still advertising an engineering position, not, not having any success there unfortunately. I'm, I'm hopeful, hopeful that Mark or Mike can tar, target somebody and we're gonna pursue someone. If we can find a Thomas out there. So I'm hopeful. Keep holding out hope. A few weeks back, I went to the Buy Mart grand opening. It was a great event. They, they have 50, they've brought 50 full-time employees to our community. I was really impressed with that statistic. They have 80 stores. This is only their second store in western Washington. So, and they use paper bags. And that's all I have. Next week's council meeting or work study, we do have the county as our first presenter and their new criminal justice center. So that's all I have. Directors, Mr. Dorsey? Nothing? Nothing? No?
I must say that Mr. Dorsey looks like he was enjoying the sun the last week or so.
When you're on the water, you tend to get sun from every direction. So I think every part of my body right now is burned.
TMI.
Mr. Bond? Sharon?
Nothing for me tonight.
Janine, anything from the clerk's office? Oh, after the meeting.
At the meet, and so I know in the past, we've done it in the front of City Hall and if, I think we should be okay weather-wise if you guys still wanna do it out in front or we could do it in here. It's just whatever you have a preference.
Let's try for outside.
Okay. So we're gonna do that right after we adjourn here this evening, that photo. So something for the good of the order and then we'll go to citizen comments?
Yeah, I just had a real quick good of the order. On Sunday, I participated in the You Can Do It Half Marathon. It's the first time they have had that event in July. They typically do it the last Sunday of December, so they added an additional one this year. And there were 176 participants and one of the ladies that was about the same pace I was, she and three of her friends came from Corvallis, Oregon to do the event. So I, it was very well done there. The race director changed six weeks before the race. The other director wasn't quite as efficient as was needed for a successful event. And so they changed the race director and, and she did just a remarkable job. And I'm pleased and I hope they come back and I hope they're back in December again.
And the clerk's office felt the pain of that necessary change.
Yeah.
We were dealing with a number of issues. We're thankful that they were able to successfully pull it off. So, all right, anything else? All right, yes?
Just one question. Could small cities band together to try to maybe hire somebody to do those ADA ramps or hire an employee? Is, would that be very, very difficult to do?
I think there's enough work for our own employee. So the, the, the first step is though, we have to have, before anybody can go do the work or even if we wanted to bid it out, is we're going to need, whether it's hiring externally, someone to design them. And those costs don't include when the storm grate is on the street corner in the wrong place now because you turn the, the direction or the fire hydrant or the water valve. That's what's, this one over here on Klein, that's why we moved the utility pole, but there's a few other things in the way too. And it's just, it's a priority, but it's not the highest priority in the city. So with that, the citizen comments, Jerry?
I was gonna say, the city sent out your notice that you were showing, but since I get most of it on my cellphone, the yellow part at the bottom doesn't show up or it.
This part? Are you talking about this flyer?
Yeah, that was sent out today by the city because I've, I read it.
The yellow on it.
And put it on, well, it looked yellow on my phone.
Okay, I'll hand you one.
Well, it was, it's just that sometimes brochures that are put on, online are not easy to read, so maybe it could just be typed, time, place. Like, I thought it was here and I put on that it was here at City Hall, but you said it's at the.
It's at the Dragonfly.
The Dragonfly, which I did not read that at all.
I'm sure Janine will in the morning look at what, what's posted online and make sure it's legible.
It looked good on my iPad. We've got it on our iPads, it looked fine.
All right.
Maybe I have a cheap cellphone. It's, it's just, I couldn't read it.
People have readers glitching out.
Yeah. But another thing, in listening to 640 Bay Street, I thought they were getting half of the street. They're only getting half, so the rest of it is.
The stair climb.
So they're getting half to build on?
Correct.
See, that wasn't.
They're purchasing half of it to build on, yes.
They're not, we're not selling to them because it's not in the, the place.
Yes, it is.
Probably we sold tonight. They're building on it, but we still own it.
We haven't sold anything tonight.
No, I, I realize that, but when it was first presented, when they came and made their presentation a long time ago, I thought that they were only getting half the street and they were using that for the stair climb. But what you're kind of implying is they're going to add that to their building lot so that they can build a larger building.
Correct.
Which wasn't, in my mind, made clear at that point in time. So just wanting to know. Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Rice?
Hi, Ron Rice. I just had a question on your business item. Any idea when that 2018 zoning map will be ready for public to pick up a copy?
It'll take effect five days after publication of the ordinance and so that's probably, it'll be not this Friday, but the following Friday.
Perfect. And can I get a big size if I wanted to hang on the wall?
We have those available, yes.
Very good. Is there a cost?
I believe there's a small fee in the fee resolution.
That's fair. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
Thanks for your question. Okay, with that, our meeting's adjourned and we're gonna go out and take a picture.
We usually.
Out front.
Yeah.
Kind of two different ways, that's what I was wondering.
I just wanted to see whether, know, tell the truth.
He was asked.
I know.
I, I couldn't coerce him.
Oh God, wasn't that awful?